I do it again. Like your legal.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his visible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as you know, we didn't have enough for our forum for last week. So we had people were in Scotland and Africa and all over the place. So, uh, so which means we've got a bigger night tonight. There's a lot of, a lot of ground to cover. So if everybody's had a chance to go over all the agenda items and, uh, make post haste through that. So can you do the interruptive roll call, please?
President Everard.
Yeah.
Vice President was his absent, uh, Secretary Zimmerman.
President.
Secretary Zeller.
Here.
Jesse Brady.
Here.
Jesse Lady.
Here.
Jesse Derrick.
Here. Ready? All right. Heather, would you mind reading this consideration out there?
Goal six, to foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis for our interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. A conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then act on that information. A conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal number three, to manage its air in such manner that archaeological and historical resources are included with natural resources for optimal preservation, education, and recreation benefits.
Thanks.
Uh, number five, conservation stewardship pledge. We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number four, we will promote actions that contribute to clean air.
Thank you. Steve, you want?
Uh, our land acknowledgement statement to many indigenous groups and tribal nations, including Ho-Chunk, Kibbou, Lakota, Dakota, Ascoo, Miami, Eora, Potawatomi, Sauk, and Swakopin. McHenry County is part of their traditional homeland. We invite you to join us in offering respect to the indigenous people living here today and their ancestors stewardship of the land. Together, we celebrate these special places, seek to learn, and honor their history. Those who came before us strive to forge meaningful relationships with indigenous communities to deepen our collective connection to them.
Thank you. All right. Uh, everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda. Is there any item that wished to be filled out? What's that? Your motion to accept the agenda?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as proposed.
Sean, Secretary Bani.
Secretary Zeller?
Yes.
President Zimmerman?
Yes.
Jesse Derrick?
Yes.
Jesse Brady?
Yes.
Jesse Lady?
Yes.
President Everard.
Yes. All right. So the agenda is about trustees report. There'll be trustees. All right. Yeah. Tell us about that one, Helen.
Oh, yeah, it was amazing, a nine day trip. Uh, we went with a group from Chicago, WGN, Steve Bertrand, and the group, um, actually had to speak to Spike Odell on the phone and Tom Skilling. So they called in. Uh, but it was wonderful, um, to see the beautiful land and the history. Just the history is amazing. Those have thousands of years to fly. Um, what the people have gone through and how they, you know, lived through it. So it was wonderful. A lot of takeaways, very conservation oriented over there. So.
Except what I understand with Ireland lost so many trees, which filter Navy with diverse timber.
They did.
And they haven't planted back.
No, they have no natural forests anymore. They're all much grazing lands for sheep and horses. The sheep industry is huge along with Guinness. This is like their major export along with a lot of butter, carry gold is their big plant over there. So, uh, but it was really a nice.
Doesn't the Guinness taste better there?
Yes, it does. I don't know why, but it does.
It doesn't travel well. You have trustees?
Uh, when do we report on the foundation?
Yeah, um, I think you do that now.
We do it now. Um, the members of the foundation were completely engaged and really appreciated the presentation by Gabe Greenwood. It's just so excellent. And I mean, it was quiet. Everybody just had to listen to what he has. And then, um, the, the foundation passed a resolution authorizing submission of the transformational grant application to the community foundation from McHenry County into the port of the conservation districts forward to two thousand forty comprehensive conservation plan, the vision to two thousand seventy-one. So they passed. And there was an extensive discussion on, uh, the donor relations and gift acceptance policy that foundation is eventually going to create. They wanted more advice on this policy.
Okay, thanks, Mike. You have trustees?
Well, I attended the hike with Mike, um, through the North Branch. Wonderful. Uh, I think attendance was pretty good. I don't remember sixteen, eighteen, something like that out there. Learned a lot. Gabe was amazing. Uh, just such a wealth of childhoods at that place. It's crazy. So I've had a really good time and, um, good attendance by, uh.
And where was Diana?
The North Branch.
Anyone else? All right. Let's see. Paul? Yeah.
Sure. Uh, help things. Um, we are going through budgets right now. I know you probably read it in the newspaper or something like that. We are working hard to balance. Um, so we're trying not to raise tax, but it's kind of sounds like it's dire. It's really not.
Especially the day that we get our assessments.
What was that?
I got my assessment before I, before I left the house today.
Okay, okay.
Really cheering for you to bounce that thing out because it's not looking good.
We're hoping that we can come up with some solutions. We'll be talking about it tonight. And of course, this next month, so got a month to, to really get to the weeds with it. So, um, another thing I'm getting a lot of, uh, just in my own email is about the solar farms here in McHenry County, whether you're for them or not, just know that us as a county, we really don't have any say so whether they go in or not. We have to say yes. So whether they're going over our farm fields, farmers are being upset, but then it's, we are, McHenry County is a green, you know, forward county. So, but the state of Illinois has basically handcuffed us and says you have to say yes. So a couple of things, it's just I've got a lot of emails in the last thirty days over the solar farms and more. We're seeing them every meeting. Tonight we got three or four on the agenda. So we're paying up speed. So.
Well, thank you. We, and we know you have a meeting yet tonight. So whenever you have to head out, that I appreciate it.
Just screw it down. Thank you.
All right. Uh, my report, let's see, a couple of things. We attended the open lands, uh, meeting on Friday and I won't talk any more about that. I mentioned Elizabeth, we'll talk a little bit about that. Then tomorrow is the Macog, um, Kerry, I'll be, uh, attending that. Anyone else going?
Yeah, I signed up.
Okay.
But I probably don't get virtual access to this shit.
No problem. We'll see you then. And then some of you had asked, right after the last meeting, I was getting ready to go on my fishing trip. So here's some of the highlights. Uh, we fish at night in Baldwin River, Michigan. Yeah. Um, two reasons. One, particularly the salmon. So the big one there in that, um, the salmon, they're typically in deep water. So they move more at night because you're used to, you know, not used to the light. So the sunlight bothers them. So at night they move and you're in the river and you can hear them and see, I mean, bumping into you. It's just something else to these salmon, hear them, feel them, literally just, you know, going up the river to do their thing. And this is thirty-four miles inland and they're just coming on through. So I was catch and release. It's a, it's a brown trout on the right side and then a salmon, eating salmon on the, uh. So I didn't net it. I caught it with a fly rod in my hand, but they use these bongs to pick them up to get a picture. And I thought, oh, then that's fine. So it was all catch and release. So they're all fine. And then went on to Marywood.
And I included a picture here of the open lands.
Oh, yeah. There, there we are at the open land. So there's the guilty party. Uh, we, it was a very nice event down at the Hilton downtown right on Michigan Avenue. Beautiful day. Um, several of us walked from the train station to the park and to the event. Beautiful day in Chicago. Great speakers and I won't say any more about it, but there we are. We represented the hoop well, I think. All right. All my comments. Neil, you have anybody online?
I'm not seeing anybody online with their hand raised.
All right, thanks. I don't see anybody in the room here to speak. So with that, get on to the consent agenda. So first of all, need to approve minutes from previous meetings.
Uh, we're still doing read. Nora needs to go through all the items and then second.
Oh, yeah. Thirteen ones are very good.
Here we go. Okay. Thirteen point O, board business consent agenda. Thirteen point one, approval of minutes of previous meetings. Thirteen point one A, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting executive session. Thirteen point one B, September ninth, twenty twenty-five, special call meeting. MCCD slash MCCF joint board meeting. Thirteen point one C, September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, committee of the hall. Thirteen point one D, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting. Thirteen point two, treasures report. Thirteen point two A, acceptance of treasures report for September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as presented. Thirteen point two B, acceptance of investment report, quarter two fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Thirteen point three, resolution number twenty-five dash eight three, adopting the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule for the McHenry County Board of Trustees. Thirteen point four, resolution number twenty-five dash eighty-four, authorizing the executive director to execute a grant agreement for snow twenty-five dash O two under the twenty twenty-five local government snowmobile grant program to provide the McHenry County Snowmobile Association with thirty thousand dollars to maintain snowmobile trails and upgrade trail signs throughout the county for a two-year period, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. Thirteen point five, resolution number twenty-five dash eight five, awarding contracts to the lowest responsible and responsive bidders of Prairie Moon Nursery of Winona, eighty-eight thousand eight hundred six dollars, Spence Restoration Nursery of Muncie, forty-three thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents, Genesis Nursery Inc., forty-three thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars eighty-nine cents, Shooting Star Native Seeds of Spring Grove, forty-one thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars twenty-three cents, Agricultural LLC of Evansville, twenty-four thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars fifty cents, and RES Great Lakes LLC, four thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars twenty-six cents, for a total cost not to exceed two hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars seven one cents for the completion of seeding projects on three hundred nine acres of various habitat types for seed mixes to consume within conservation areas. Thirteen point six, resolution number twenty-five dash eight six, authorizing the executive director to sign a site use agreement with McHenry County Snowmobile Association and the Huntley Penguins. Thirteen point seven, resolution number twenty-five dash eight seven, authorizing the disposal of three vehicles, one trail vehicle, and two tractor rotors through a public online auction with Open Off Auction Services, Inc. Thirteen point eight, resolution number twenty-five dash eight eight, ratifying the conservation district's participation in the McHenry County Conservation Foundation's grant application to McHenry County Community Foundation's transformational grant programs for the forward to twenty forty comprehensive conservation plan with a vision to twenty seventy-one. Thirteen point nine, resolution number twenty-five dash eight nine, authorizing the executive director to execute a festival services agreement with Canyon Associates, Inc., for the Curry Trail Lane, Edgewood Road to Bull Valley Road, which I moved, for a cost not to exceed thirty-seven thousand two hundred people.
All right. Do you move to approve those?
Move to, yes, I saw moved.
How's that, Chris?
Second, the other, thank you.
Jesse Lady?
Yes.
Jesse Derrick?
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman?
Yes.
Jesse Brady?
Yes.
Secretary Zeller?
Yes.
President Everard?
Yes. Nice. What were the bills?
Yes. Uh, fourteen one A, on my fifth treasures audit, did pull three items from September twenty twenty-five. Fail both. Uh, first one was, um, invoice two, three, eight, three, eight, three, seven, one. Um, it's part of a larger, um, amount for Inglely Springs, um, September water delivery. Uh, it's four hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. The only reason I pulled it is just because it just was an outlier of all the other costs that were for the other facilities in terms of delivery. It's just much, much higher than anything else. Um, second one was, uh, to enhance Networks Incorporated, was two O two, five O three, seven, three. Um, for April, May, June, network service for, uh, Lost Valley. It was for thirteen thirty-one seventy-one, same, same reason, just, um, it's just an outlier when you look at it in comparison to the costs of the other facilities, assuming it's because it was for a longer period of time. But just that. Last one was just Nelmoed, uh, Services Group. Uh, invoice four, three, three, five, one, seven, oh, five, sprinkler replacements, six thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and eight cents, just because it's a higher ticket item. Agree about that.
All right. Yeah.
Uh, fourteen one B, uh, make a motion to approve the payment. Bills as indicated on submission of bills pending report for the month ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and just take second.
Second.
Heather? Yeah?
Secretary Zeller?
Yes.
Jesse Brady?
Yes.
Jesse Lady?
Yes.
Jesse Derrick?
Yes.
Treasurer Zimmerman?
Yes.
And President Everard?
Yes. All right, Elizabeth, personnel policy?
All right. So we have two policy manuals to review with you this evening. The first reading, again, for new board members, just as practice, we go through first reading tonight. Um, if there's no substantive changes, then we would recommend consensus to move forward uh, for second reading next month. Of course, as we go through the highlights, if there's discussion or items that board like to have more information on, we need to fine tune. Um, now's the time to have the discussion. Jenny's going to come up and she's going to lead through the first manual, which is our personnel policy and procedural manual. This is a manual that we update annually, mostly because there's changes that are occurring at the federal government and then at the state house. So we need to make sure that we are in compliance and then it gives us an opportunity to clean up any other, um, scrutiny there or there are things that get notified or just general process that.
Do you, and, um, as you saw, it probably outlined in the board pack and stuff, a lot of policies this year are new and it's because of state laws and everything that we have to conform with, um, and to apply with, um, some affect this year, some will in the next year too. Um, and then starting out, looking at, um, the reported abuse, suspicion of abuse of appropriate behavior with minors, vulnerable adults, non-mandated reporters. So there is a state law out there for mandated reporters and, uh, the state defines those as medical personnel, social service, health personnel, crisis intervention personnel, education personnel. Then there's the recreation or athletic program or facility personnel, childcare personnel, law enforcement, funeral, home director, and clergy. So, uh, this whole list, um, obviously our police staff would be considered under here. And then you look at the education department too, that recreational personnel, they fall under mandated reporters. And so what Pderma has come out and said, they put this policy together and there's another one later on too, that they wanted us to have. And I think it's to further protect us and safeguard us so someone can't say, that's not my job. And, you know, they basically, you see something, something, and that's what we're saying here too. And it doesn't matter if you're not considered a mandated reporter, should you see something, you still need to bring it home. So I think that's a good policy that again, that kind of safeguards us in that respect. Um, then the next is the vehicle use. So several years ago, the policy was adopted from Pderma. Pderma will put out sample policies. And so a lot of times we'll take those and kind of bring them into more where we need to play some at it and hear the culture. And so, um, they recently updated their policies. So I went in, did some cleanups. There's one paragraph that was a repeat and changed some morning. It says the same thing, just kind of a little bit better. Right? Um, I did carry over in our safety manual. We do talk about, um, we may be conducting Pderma abstract checks annually. So I did carry that over into this policy as well. Um, so again, a lot of us more kind of just a little bit more, uh, clean up in that respect. And then AI, that is like the newest, uh, newest. It's been out there for a while, right? But it's giving me more and more buzz, more and more things are coming out, software's coming out with AI. Um, and so to kick things off here, and the stance we're taking, we're putting this policy out there. We're saying it's going to be a limited use of, um, AI is permitted in there. We outline it's acceptable uses. Um, in using that, right, general knowledge, questions meant to enhance understanding, brainstorm ideas, uh, create formulas for Excel spreadsheet, determine programs, draft emails or letters, and that online research or create outlines for projects. Um, but then we also talk about the prohibited data inputs, right? We're not going to be using, um, personal health information, uh, putting those personal identifiers in there, security number, driver license, um, I have in there like a class, a lot of people data, um, or anything else that is more of that private sensitive confidential nature, right? So that stuff will not be going in there. And they have general guidelines of that use and talking about logging in and, and using district emails and so forth, um, tracking their prop history, um, not using that for illegal activities. I do want to highlight here, and as I do have here, um, the L. M. Human Rights Act is coming out uh, with, uh, regards to law discriminating or prohibiting discrimination and using AI for those HR type activities, right? Hiring emotions and discharge. And, um, I'm completely in support of that. Uh, so, um, we do have also in this policy, uh, I did work in word even here about employees should not use it to make employment decisions, including, and again, that's kind of way out in screen here. Hiring is supposed to fetch intermation promotion, demotion or salary increase for the, since, um, or shouldn't be used to evaluate performance reviews. So that's the, the HR guideline that is added to that, um, policy as well. I've been working with Amelia, we're talking about training, um, as well, and moving forward. So I got that brought up in, in this policy too, where that would be something, um, on our sites as well. Next. Um, use of paid leave prior to unpaid leave. Uh, within the last year, this was a kind of a standard operating procedure that our county department did. And they had all the payroll and track when people are using that pay time off. And there's some situations that came to play more commonly when it's a new employee starting, uh, and maybe they want to take a time off, but, you know, they might, they might have a vacation they are in or make, but they say, I want to keep that till later. And our, our standard operating practice has been, now, if you have the time on the books, you're going to be using the time on the books, right? Uh, you're not going to hold it until later. All right. So just kind of further solidifying that, that behind the doors, you know, standard operating procedure, we put that in the policy manual. So it wouldn't be a surprise to managers or employees as that comes up as well. Um, looking at Blood Donation Leave Act, the Blood Donation Act has been out there for a long time. It's been more for the full-time employees. And over the last few years, like organ donation was added to this. And now this year, um, part-time employees have been added to that organ donation piece too, where they could take time off for that. So that was, um, an addition to that policy as well. Need of NATO family, that's another new policy, another new law that's coming out there. Um, to my understanding, I don't know if Andrew's on, uh, but to my understanding, Dean, for those who are HR minded here, um, it is to be taken in addition to the FMLA. Um, and if I'm wrong, Andrew could correct me, this is still, there's not been a lot of information out there on this one yet. Just that, you know, we have to have it in play, uh, soon. So, um, still, I have some legal supposedly and stuff that are queued up that I'll be attending. I hope to get more information. But to my understanding right now, that's the, uh, cheese of that, when people get additional time off, um, twenty days of leave, um, for a individual, for an individual with a, a baby and a naked. And then, um, a military funeral, uh, funeral service honors detail, that is too, also a new one. I mean, it coincides with another military, um, policy we have in here. With this one, it's to be able to attend, uh, participate in funeral detail. What's kind of unique about this though is it's not only for a retired or active member of the reserve or armed forces, but someone could be, uh, not a member or active member and could be part of a nonprofit organization, I guess, that could be seen as authorized provider, which we define in here. Um, that maybe also be able to attend and just pay these funeral, um, details as well. So that one is kind of different, new as well for laws.
They're wanting people to play taps.
Yeah. Yeah. It's probably my guess on that one. So, uh, that is, that is different. You know, usually military policies, there's the military members, right? So that one is a, that's a new one to add to that one as well. And then it's like, so then, so we're looking at best, and this has been around for a while to focus on of victims of, uh, domestic violence, sexual violence, gender violence. Um, and what the recent updates to this law was, you know, part of the district policies, we have a policy, you can't use district property for personal business. What this law is saying, well, you can use your employer's cell phone, computer, tablet, or whatever to record, um, a, a domestic violence situation or, or domestic gender violence or a, um, sexual violence situation. So, um, which I did update our telephone policy where it says, you can't use your cell phones for business other than business use. I did put a line in there, uh, less authorized by another policy in this manual. So that is, uh, an addition to that law that's up there. Information systems that, um, it was a cleanup. It's been in there for a long time. It was about twenty pages long. A lot of it was more related to our IT, like the backup systems and more of the heavy stuff that employees just don't need to know. And then our policy and our guidelines kind of get lost with everything in it. So I, um, working with Amelia on that and we kind of cleaned it up to, so it, the policy, what we expect our employees to comply with doesn't get lost. I clearly see that in that policy as well. And then lastly, the reporting about re violations. Again, this is another one that Pderma has asked us to put in there, which I think is still, it's still good. You know, you think common sense is common sense when you're dealing with kids and vulnerable adults, but it's laid out those guidelines, those boundaries that, you know, what not to cross, you shouldn't be. And a lot of this, I think, is going to be more geared to your seasonal staff, right? We, we're hiring eighteen-year-olds, nineteen-year-olds. They may be conducting camp, the thirteen-year-olds. So, um, just send those guidelines. They shouldn't be trading phone numbers and shouldn't be giving rides or, you know, invading spaces and touching. So, um, that too, I think is a really good policy, kind of further protect us in those areas as well. Um, and it'll comply with our volunteer program as well in that regard. So again, a lot of it's to Pderma policies and how they flood it if someone sees something and, oh, maybe it's a custodian seeing something, a seasonal place doing, you know, they need to be telling us something and, and, and of course, um, respond to it, investigate it, take the right steps there. So, um, our results in those.
Um, yeah, one, one, uh, consideration for a policy that I don't think is in the plan and that it's based on something that happened earlier in the year, uh, whether or not we consider, uh, establishing a policy that for employee gets hurt or has property, uh, causes property damage, that there be no automatic drug test associated with that, send them out for medical treatment.
Yeah, in our drug policy, we do for accidents, we do call it like third-party. You know, where we went and typically in the past, historically, we've done that. Um, but obviously there's other factors to that.
Okay. Well, just take a look at that. It's a first reading. As you're going through a second reading, just take a look. Okay, well, just take a look at that. Is it, when it's a first reading, as you're going through a second reading, just take a look at that. When you have a conversation offline, I'm happy to give me a call.
I think you know where you're you're going with that and Jenny.
I did have a conversation on that incident. And so Paderma, the way it's been drafted, is there, you know, vehicle accidents and absolute. And I think the request is it doesn't matter what it is, it's mandatory so that no one can be that you're um. You know, subjecting somebody else to not being, you know, equality wise across. It's just everyone has to get, you're in an accident.
Yeah, then you're not playing favorites. If everybody has to, then you're not picking and choosing and there's no discrimination.
Looking, yeah, so that's a further conversation. Was it kind of preliminary? Have any that have a further one?
Okay.
Do we have any feedback, Jenny, on floating that with Paderma on their thoughts or what other members, they have? I mean, we follow usually what Paderma has, not that we take a higher stand.
Socialize. Sometimes I hear, yeah, I've got, I go to safety point interviews with other park districts and stuff, and there's stuff that comes up. Some of this nature are related, but I don't have a feeling um of where everyone's at on that one. Um, so.
So if there's consensus, and Andrew, you're online and you may know, could you handle many park district clients and and others in the space here? For the uh drug testing mandatory for everyone? Any feedback? Because if we get direction, we can incorporate language to bring it back.
If medical.
Yeah.
Yes.
Jenny was alluding to our Elizabeth. I, I sometimes it's hard to pick up the voices. But yeah, I mean, it's very common to have language in policies that talks, talk about any sort of vehicle accident or incident. You know, whether it's a car, a truck, a tractor, anything like that, then that triggers automatic drug testing. I'm off the top of my head, I'm not sure, one way or another, if there's broader language that sort of covers all quote unquote incidents. Um, but again, I, you know, to me, unless Paderma has a severe allergic reaction to the concept. As Lloyd uh was pointing out, if we, if we're treating everybody the same. Um, I don't legally see an issue with it. If we have a standard that says, hey, if you, if you get hurt, if you cause an accident. You know, whether it's with a vehicle or a weed whacker or a chain, you know, whatever it is. That we're going to require you to go in, as long as we're establishing that and handling it in an even, even-handed manner, I don't see an issue with it.
And I can say, within industry, it's standard practice. Just take a look at it.
Let's do that. Let's look at that language and then we can add that into. We're just special, if that's the direction, happy to do that would give us some more absolute versus interpretation. Because right now it's limited to vehicles definite and then it's subject to. And then we do, of course, the random drug testing, which is just.
Just a quick question. This is while the individual is actually being employed that day or that time, it's not that. Off.
Maybe going sending over to occupational health or wherever we would send if they were in an accident.
Right, now, the, the, the. The, I guess what would be kind of difficult is we all travel outside this county. So uh you would have to look at, you're like, uh, for example, I go to Blue Bay Dell Park District for a safety court meeting. Maybe I get in an accident on nine ninety. So what we would have to vet out.
Yeah.
Details on that, right? You know, so it's not all just right here in the county where that is. Um.
But it could be not during more than hours.
But the rule there's supposed to be that if you have an accident during work, you're supposed to report. That's, that's one, because you know, mi- minor medical can become infected and then it becomes a hospitalization and it just goes on and on. So you're up, so those are the ones when they come forward to say, hey, I had an accident. We decide, hey, you need medical treatment. It's not just aspirin or a butterfly stitch. You got to go in. If you're going in, we're sending you in, then you need to have a step.
Okay, so it's not on a, you know, on the weekend when they're not working, it's just specific.
Well, technically though, we have employees working, I mean, some days we can get people working, right? We have our police department.
Oh, sure.
It's work.
Yeah, it's something.
While like resources.
I think she meant on their day.
Education, so uh we would have to look at them, vet it out. And I got, I know Northwest Medicine has changed some stuff over the years. I've been, they had something where someone could come on to testing. Um, I have to see where they're at on, on things like that too. So it's just looking at logistics and however.
My personal preference is I, I don't like random testing. I prefer if you have an accident.
Right, and and random, yeah, and just to be clear for the random, it's always from C D L drivers because that's.
That's required.
Right, so that we do uh through Northwest Medicine, we're part of their random drug testing program for C D L. So that, that's the only.
Yeah, pilots and truck drivers, I'm okay with that.
And so this would go because not everybody, you know, some have district vehicles, some um may be using their own personal vehicles. But they're still at work and it's still a potential, you know, an injury or whatever that would come. It's just it would be in the employee, in your case, is they have the responsibility of notification. I had an accident, I need to ask to have this done, it's policy. So that responsibility, it's now, I think.
And there's language, you know, and I can, you know, kinds of policy manuals and union contracts that share with it, so. Any other comments or book, or any other policies?
I have a question. I was wondering if there's a specific AI tool that staff are being steered toward to use.
No, I think all of us have different ones. It could be, I, I know, for example, I don't know if I'm lacking in process, but you know, I know you can create pictures and I, there's chat G P T. I could probably stop the P and R. So there's not like one, one source that say, hey, just use this. I think it's kind of the job.
Any other comments? Jay? Not? Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to the second read.
That's that one. All right. Next one we're going to go through is the Contrad hensive administrative policy and procedural manual. It's both. Um, so we're going to go through first reading here and to follow along, we're going to go through, there are several changes. Many of the things that we did clean up, as you'll see, board member changes, they're non-substantive. It's just our regular routine to get everything back. So what you've seen a lot of red line and that isn't a copy. And I hope you were able to link in the attachments on session lab. They were too large, so we had to use our shared drive uh for you to link through. So I just want to make sure everybody was able to access through that uh that method. Um, and if not, we'll make sure for second reading, we'll make sure that you're able to have the link did not. We're not able to do that. All right, so um we're going to go through, it's in several of our chapters, they're broken down. Um, so between general administration, governance, employee organizational structure, finance, land preservation, natural resources. And lastly, public communication and educational services. The first uh group of changes is under the general administration chapter. And we are adding language in about climate change, adaptation, resilience and mitigation. And we have a public facing climate change statement. And um appreciate our land preservation, natural resources team for putting this together. It's been part of our strategic goals. And as we manage, um, this is something that the district does, and so we were absent of that. So um the language is here. And so um this is the first time this is being introduced in a policy manual. So I don't know if there was any feedback on that or anything else, Jay, that you wanted to mention.
Oh, this is just the kind of high level for the district and then in the actual stuff and policy. We dive deeper into climate change and we can discuss that more detailed when we get there. But this is just kind of high level for the organization. Section two here. Very good one, too.
All right, we move into two, um incorporating. We did have training earlier in the year about the Illinois Public Office of Prohibited Activities Act. It's been something we had in place, it's been the law, but now incorporating here. So it's available, it's visible, and obviously it just calls it out. So um again, we've added that here. And of course, this act, as you know, it prohibits elected appointed officials from providing certain types of services to the district. Or having direct or indirect financial interest in any contract for performance of any work in the making or letting of which trustees may be called upon to act or vote. And then the policy just has it outlined there at the different thresholds, just so it's available and keep us all knowledgeable and then. Uh, the third, um, moving on is in the employee organizational structure. And if you want page numbers on where these can be found, I can give that to you. Um, check the three, these are page forty-one, forty-two and forty-four on these items. The first one, the Salary and Wage Compensation Administration. When we did our last comp study, we included, we used to have the four, seven, and we added the fifteen-year area to move individuals along. And so this just maps what we are doing and puts it into the policy at fifteen. And then the authority to employ personnel under the Conservation District Act Limited. Because there's only five conservation districts in Illinois, we, we rely on other policies, but it's pretty prescriptive. And so unless the board gives me authority to do something, I can't do it. And unless I get authority from the board to transfer duties, then I have to do it. So here, what we're doing, obviously, is we're training staff at very high levels and for efficiency. It would be to delegate hiring um to the executive team, um the directors of our divisions. On positions that are non-supervisory or managerial. So they would have the authority to do the review, to, to do the hiring without me and my sign off. Um, the, the, the level of the leadership team at the directors is still coming across like that. So this is a change and everything that will help for efficiency and I think they're very capable of making those types of management decisions. Okay, going into chapter five, finance administration. This is where we get into the recent legislation that was passed um with uh public act one oh four, zero one oh four. Um, that raised the bid limit. So we're having to go through each of the thresholds and clean up any of the areas where policies had that old bid limit. And that's what we kind of worked from, which was at that twenty-five thousand limit. So now there is a threshold that allows us to increase um for materials and supplies to sixty thousand. So you'll see we've adjusted that in our naming rights, sponsorship and advertising, and then our next assets um that we, that we manage as well. All right, into a little bit more about bid procedures and purchasing. And so um we've had prior discussion and trying to put this into practice, determining with these new thresholds. Modifying at what level of the organization for procurement, who needs to sign off on it and to how much. So that's what we're really going to be talking about here. And uh it goes into various areas. So on district purchases, currently, um we've had ranges and we've increased the amount. As an example, uh dollar limits in the past for full-time employees, um up to two hundred dollars. Now we're proposing that move to five hundred. Um, for supervisors and managers, instead of what it was at a thousand, giving them up to two thousand. Um, and so on and so forth. So um leading up to where um the Director of Administration and Finance, um it'll go up through at every level. They get the signatures up to that point. Uh, Andy would have the authority up to thirty thousand dollars. Um, anything greater than fifteen thousand and thirty, he would come to Andy's desk for sign off. I would not see it right now that has had to come to my desk. Um, and then ultimately, um, because for supplies and materials, we can now go to sixty thousand dollars without having to go to bid. That would come to my desk at that next level for materials and supplies. Anything that's um for worker services, that's labor, um that still requires bidding. And um ultimately, anything that is greater than sixty thousand for supplies and materials, that would come to the board trustees. For authorization to go. And so again, anything that when we go to bid, we're coming in front of the board. It does twofold, it makes you aware of those larger purchases, it announces to the community that we're putting a bid out on the street. So that vendors can competitively bid on that process.
Sean, any comments you're concerned? No?
Everybody's kind of comfortable with how we've laid out the thresholds and the. Right. So that moves us on. Again, signing a contract, that's a legal document, so the same rules apply. Um, if your purchase threshold, then who needs to sign off and be the final signature? So again, same rules, Andy will be able to sign contracts up to thirty thousand dollars. Um, they'll need my signature for materials and supplies once they cross over that thirty thousand to sixty thousand. And then for anything that's over thirty thousand for working services or over sixty thousand for supplies and materials that go to bid. The board is seeing that and you're authorizing myself as the executive director to execute those documents. Once the board has approved them or um they'll require a board president's signature. Take that, so again, it's following the same. All right, on competitive quotes, um again, some changes here based on those thresholds and then again, a lot of the effort. So in the past, we were getting uh needing for items that were of a smaller amount. So now what we're proposing is that anything up to two thousand five hundred dollars, do not need to get competitive quotes. But we encourage for anything that's over five hundred dollars that they get multiple quotes. I mean, that's the encouraged, basically want to get the best pricing, but obviously not absolute. We move anything greater in that range up to ten thousand beyond the twenty-five hundred, they will need to get three quotes. And again, written is preferred and they need to document on the purchase records we've talked about. That they've received the information and this is what they got, whether it be verbal or vet. Once they move over the range of ten thousand to thirty thousand, they must have three written quotes, that's required. And um we'll need to again communicate that. And then of course, back to anything over thirty thousand and anything over sixty thousand, thirty thousand working service. Supplies and materials for over sixty, they have to be competitive, so. Any, any issues with the thresholds for the types of quotes and what's needed?
No, I think though that um, you know, we brought this up with the office furniture, which I think is a great example. Where, you know, you, you know, it's something that you're not going to kind of fulfill. That office furniture renovation to the whole district right away, right? At one time, but it's just not feasible. The future you're going to go back to, you're going to go back to the same vendor. But it may be two years later, you're going to have to get a new quote from them. That, um, you know, the, the policy and procedure, I think, I think it's okay to state back that. You know, that original sole source is okay for you to just go ahead and use that future vendor again.
Right, so the cumulative, which we'll get into in bidding or that in the same uh year, right? You can't.
Yeah.
Um, so when you go into that following year, right? We're, we're using a vendor that we know is a sole source provider, we've done the financing, we know the service. We're not exceeding something that would require as well as a sole source, but we're not having good bid on it.
Right, yeah, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I, that actually ended up being just, I mean, just a good example where. You know, to do that entire project to the whole district out one year was basically, but it may be have to be readdressed a few years later. And there could be other things on the district that's like that, where you used, you know, a, a, you know, a, a company to. You know, source maybe a structure or building or something like that. Um, and then you need to do in addition, well, you're going to want to use the same people that did the initial build out of that.
So this would allow us to do that, I guess, it's just the documentation that we would provide to the board.
Yeah.
Are you looking for some additional language in the policy manual to be missing?
Would help.
Maybe even put in that as an example.
Yeah, exactly, right, yeah.
Can work with Andrew and see how we could craft something.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sean.
All right, emergency purchases. So um again, these things do happen, but we want to clarify. Um, and so we did, Andrew helped us here with how this would work because it can become tricky. And so emergencies, purchases, there is a definition and there are events that could not have been foreseen. And when immediate action is necessary to perform critical functions and or safeguard the public's health and safety. So um just because that we need it and we need it done is not a good enough reason for it to be an emergency purchase. Because we can then, or the board have a special call and we'll do what's necessary to work. So this is, this is going above and beyond that. Um, if in fact it truly is an emergency and it fits those guidelines, then. Um, I would require that we, I would waive the three-fold process. We may just sign a bid and we would go and that discretion would come up to my desk to be able to do so. If we have to forego competitive bidding for those two areas that are required by law to be bid. So works and services from a thirty or greater than sixty thousand. Then there's three things that we need to do. One, we have to identify and I have to document that it is an emergency and it's for public health and safety. The reasons that are stated, we'll consult with the board president. So again, getting authorization there, and so the board would give that authority to consult. And then um we'd go ahead and make the purchase and the next available, some possible regularly scheduled meeting would come in part of the. At H or. So that would just move us so. Any questions about that? And then change orders, um there's been some change in the law, um and this falls under the criminal code. Um, and normally, um, our state statute for change orders, um, that have been over uh twenty-five thousand dollars or more. Um, we need to have those approved. And if they're combined. And if they're combined consecutively, and and we have our own, in our policy, we had some language that would allow myself as executive director to go ahead and approve the change order and then have it ratified again the next available, meaning to keep projects that are in the field going. Um, but we had a limitation of the number of days, state law has changed. So there's now a longer timeframe, which is good of a hundred and eighty days. And then um the amount of the the change order too um gives us a higher threshold. And then this is same language that we've always had, but just information here so board knows. Any contracts of a bid with change orders that would take a fifty percent over the bid contract, they have to. Stand to a change order.
Uh, this is the first time and it's probably been there before, the criminal code, how serious is that? And who is responsible, who gets the call? Assess the crime?
Andrew, did you hear the question? So because change orders of this comes under the criminal code, who, who gets the violation? And uh, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, um, I don't think you can really um. Not sure it's possible to hold the district as an agency responsible for a criminal violation. So it would be the, the individuals involved in knowingly authorizing these change orders without the appropriate approvals consistent with the statute. Because I I I believe the language in the statute refers to knowingly and intentionally, um, which is often a criminal element. So obviously, if there was a mistake or an accident, that wouldn't necessarily be knowingly or intentionally. But it's essentially if individuals are involved in approving change orders that knowingly um circumvent or don't comply with the criminal code, then there's a possibility for criminal prosecution.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so the, so it was where the district had the ten thousand, now it's twenty five thousand. That's the the statute that's been changed, so that gives a little bit more flexibility. Still keeping in that same process, but just wanted to check, those changes have been made. All right, that's all purchasing, so good, that was, that was the big bulk of things. Now we're gonna move on to land preservation and natural resources, again, chapter seven. And um through this document on that chapter, there's many definitions that have been added as well as just modified to ensure that we've got consistency. Because you, as you give it through a a look, there were a lot of inconsistencies and how a definition was described in a policy. And so uh great work there in cleaning that up. You'll see new definitions uh for carbon sequestration, carbon storage, climate change adaptation, enrichment, initiation, natural resources, nature-based solutions, nuisance animal, resilience and pre-European American, because we used uh, we had different terminology that was made, so we. Uh, in many of these cases, these are things that the district has been doing and nature-based solution. So it's just providing a name for it or the actions that we've been doing on the land. Now we're in compliance because the policies and definitions are supporting what actually is going to take place. Anything else you want to add?
No, I'll just say that some of our tactics, strategic plan tactics called out for uh, in this case here, carbon credits, which is a new one, uh, previous boards had had left a place for that in the policy. Our plan called for us to explore potential for carbon credits. So we essentially just uh following the mitigation policy provided that carbon credit. Now, the board's probably aware, we, current carbon credits that we have are good foundation. But this just allows uh us to to do carbon credit on district property uh now having our policy. And the second one is climate change. Zach uh is the subject matter expert on this, but our our strategic plan was to incorporate climate change messaging programs and then also into our policy. So Zach did a great job. Previously, we had climate resilience, we just expanded that climate resilience to uh essentially the plan for future conditions with climate considerations. That's how I was somewhere, is it, Zach, anything you'd like to add to that?
I think that's a great summary.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Yes.
What was, what was um pre-European American replacing?
There was a number of different words, so.
A variety of all there is.
Pre-settlement, pre-European.
Okay.
So it was just trying to consolidate it to one state, which we found was the pre-European.
Is that synonymous with indigenous? Or not necessarily?
Non-indigenous. So bef- before.
Pre-European.
Would be indigenous, right?
Right.
Yes. Correct.
Yeah, so European American or pre-European would be indigenous.
Right. I guess my question is, why not? Why use the term pre-European American? I've just not heard that before, so I'm curious, why not indigenous?
Just because of the impact of the European American.
So putting it in that context.
Yeah, because that's when we start seeing massive changes, ecological changes on a landscape.
That's a good, that's a good point though, because we have our, we have our um indigenous. I mean, we've made a commitment with our, our statement and and how we reference indigenous cultures and then yet referencing European Americans and the impact of how we get restoration. Sure, good, is that kind of like in that place, because it's connecting the two.
And we've, we've discussed all three languages as well in the future. But as of right now, it was to consolidate one term, so that having multiple different terms describing the same word.
Well, often what it was is it was referring to restoring to conditions that were pre-settlement, pre-Euro-American. So it's talking about restoring to those conditions or trying to replicate conditions that were prior to that time. And it's just as Dan said, because we had, you know, we had uses of pre-settlement, pre-Euro-American, pre-American, pre-European and just prior to what's settled. So it's just taking one word and it is, there's both of that, both referring to conditions that were pre-European American and conditions that are uh, that were um present under indigenous communities are used in different, different ways. When we're talking about pre-European American, it's often using, there's this time point that we can put, we can say before this, there was not pre, there was not Euro-American settlement. After this, there was, so we're looking at that particular point.
That's helpful, thank you. And that makes sense because indigenous doesn't necessarily only mean five hundred years ago. It's also today. So this is about putting it at a moment in time, that's helpful. Can I ask one other language question? I'm curious um what the thinking is on landing on climate change adaptation as opposed to mitigation or both?
Yeah, so it's, we, we have both in there and it's because they're, they're different things. So mitigation is actively uh trying to take actions that reduce climate change itself. So actively, generally it's actively reducing greenhouse gases into the atmosphere or pulling them out of the atmosphere. Adaptation is actions to address the impacts of climate change. Uh, so we're accepting that certain amount of climate change has already happened, is going to continue to happen in the future. So we're taking management's actions in order to ensure that our natural resources, processes, human communities are able to adapt to and or be resilient to those changes. Whereas mitigation is actively trying to address the root causes of climate change.
It's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot and it's really the nuances, so I think it's great to be there and have an interesting perspective on all of that. Awesome. Uh, and then we move again more into, again, climate change adaptation policy, adaptive management, introduction and removal of species, and then the research program was, which was the research field station. So just moving that actual information. Maybe you want to add on the adaptive management, kind of what we're doing there since that is a new policy and the introductions?
Again, we had the word invasive before species there. And removal of species, which would be in the.
Well, there's also an introduction.
So what, so we used to have, I'm sorry, what we used to have is reintroductions and reintroductions, it is said that we would only bring in species that uh had been extirpated. But we, we bring in species as part of a restoration process that are currently here. So this just allows us to do what we've pretty been doing, but we've kind of just narrowed, it sounded to be extremely narrow, we've kind of broadened it to say introduction of species. So it's really taken a look at the things that we're doing. And in the actual uh, the next part after the introduction is defining what we're going to evaluate for those introductions of species, so making sure that they're from this area.
Yeah, I was a question, I was a question of species coming in, I was questioning which ones are eradicated.
Yeah, that, do you remember?
Yeah, there is, there is a policy specifically on uh controlling invaders. Uh, for the policy on removal of species is because it's also including things like hunting and fishing, where it's not necessarily invasive species. So it covers any removal of uh plant or animal material from district lands, which isn't necessarily invasive, we do have uh hunting, fishing and the cultural harvest days as well as social. Okay, good, thanks.
And then I saw the introduction sources, so how are we going to evaluate which, which species and where we're getting them from? Are those?
Yeah, because in some of these, you've got the, the chapter heading, you've got the subheading, and then there's bullets that are underneath that that break it out, so.
Excuse me, this could include native species as well, progressive needs.
Yeah, that's really what we're talking about here is for the introductions is bringing back those native species. Again, previously it's that just those that have been lost. But we do a little restoration of species that are currently on the landscape. And just, we just want them sourced locally or regionally. And then with the climate, climate's factor in that too is, so what is the, the future climate going to be? So have a climate lens into some of these nature though.
Yeah, I guess going for aggressive native, native species might be on your list of removals.
Yes, correct, absolutely.
And then the last chapter is in our public communication and educational services. And again, just some general cleanup of um some, there was some specific language on particular social media platforms that we're no longer using, so making sure that was cleaned up. Registration software, listing them by name, and again, more neutralizing it, just we have a registration software system. We don't need to say who the vendor is in this. Um, and then on the logo and branding, just to be very clear, one thing that was made on uniforms is that our marketing team, since they are the responsible party for brand management, that everything is going through that department and they're just not crunching things up on the local and seats. So that just clarifies that. And then uh to come on the education library. And that is pretty much it in a nutshell. Any questions that we haven't covered on the?
We're done.
I have, I have one comment. Maybe this is next on the to-do list. But do you have a vision for incorporating climate change into the conservation ethic or stewardship budget?
Interesting, I think we've got, I'd be curious as I, because these were old documents and so it may be something that we refresh or we bring us forward as well and kind of rotate in. Um, because it is something, so that would really be a good conversation.
Maybe with the strategic planning process.
But yeah, now that we have that public facing statement, I would see that as something we want to socialize around.
Fine.
Uh, and then um, let's see, the other board business that we have briefly is conservation foundation projects. So out of process, um, before we advance projects for funding requests to the foundation, we'll bring it in front of this body to, for concurrence. Then we'll send it forward and they'll get to choose. We have three items that we would leave, would be worthy of their uh consideration. One being a land acquisition project, they like that. Um, continuation of our artist and residency program that we've been doing. And we're gonna hear in November about the wayfinding projects that a meeting team and planning have been working on with McDAD and National Mechanic County. Um, and so once we have a design and adopted, we'll be to shop out on the opportunity to get some funding to implement and put those signs in order. So those are the three projects we feel um should be advanced and then. In terms of same.
So can I ask a maybe dumb question?
Okay.
So this means that these are items that are in the conservation district plans that we are now moving to the foundation to have as fundable opportunities that they can take to donors, grant-making organizations.
Correct.
And apply for funding for them.
Correct, correct. So they could either go out of their reserves or, but really ultimately is to have a longer, what they've been looking for, are projects that are one, exciting and two, that that has a a longer planning ramp, you know, so to speak, to raise the capital that's necessary to do them. Um, we've been in a place for a while, um, obviously, one, trying to catch up and not being able to deliver on new initiatives and things has been maintenance and that's not been the things that they have really truly wanted to fund, they're difficult, raise capital and. So um I think as we have those mutual shared conversations and as we come out of the forward to twenty forty plan, there will be priorities that will give that longer planning ramp to, that that they'll be able to get behind. So this is kind of that stopgap, we're not quite there yet, but there, they are things that are aligned.
And there's other things that we go to them for. So for example, when we were looking at hiring a consultant to do the, you know, the long-term strategy, we went to them for partial funding and they came through pretty heavy for us. So as things come up, we can still go back to them for, for other things. And then lo- more long-term is, is Elizabeth was saying, they want us to identify major projects so that things that come out of this strategic plan, if there's something specific, let's say it's a, you know, the, the house that we went, let's say it was that, as an example. They would then rally around a specific cause to go to donors to say, rather than just giving us money for, you know, we want to do this project, would you support that project? That's really what they're looking for from us, but this is, this will help us in the short run.
So attractive funding opportunities that they can shop.
Yeah, they're, they're eager for that and then we've been trying to get capacity-wise. So if we offer it, we need to be able to deliver that we can do it.
Yes.
Because otherwise that gets everyone asking.
Right, wow. And did you say that they came through, you said something about how they came through in a big way with funding for the strategic planning process?
They've committed a hundred thousand to the forward to twenty forty plan. They've also assisted in leading to write the grant, the transformational grant, and they were a big fundraiser. They did a big amount of lift for our proposition, what was paid for.
So the hundred thousand that you just mentioned is separate from the grant application that's going to the community foundation?
Correct.
That one, we don't know if that's been awarded or not.
It was just submitted, correct.
Right, the hundred thousand was something that came through.
Separately, correct. Yeah, they committed to that because it was to split it. We kind of estimated it was gonna be around two hundred thousand before we actually got the final pricing. So they said, let's split it down the middle and we'll provide up to a hundred thousand dollars district-wise. Now, obviously, understand if we can get some additional capital, right, funding, we know it's gonna cost more than what we originally envisioned, so.
So has the foundation raised that hundred thousand, whereas?
It's out of their reserves.
There's, it's out of their reserves.
So, so they raise annually through annual appeals, you know, they, they have other fundraising things they do out the year. So it goes into their general fund, from the general fund, then they deem, you know, obviously they're paying for salary, they're paying for other initiatives that they need throughout the year. And then they have been funding certain things just from their reserves and investments.
Sorry.
But ideally, one of the big pieces is to raise larger dollars, which is gonna require increasing their. Ownment.
Their menu of upper fundays, yeah.
And Bani, you know, because she's the liaison.
Yeah, and I, I do have one issue, one issue in one sense. And this is out of topic a little bit. Uh, we had an audit done and audits are so important because uh a foundation who's supporting the entity that has had this audit needs to know how good the audit was, how often they changed their auditor. They need, because there's so many public agencies that have violated their mission uh by holding on to the same auditor for twenty years and having a relationship with. And so someday, the. And so someday the au, the foundation will perhaps run into somebody, a banker or, or you know, person in banking or somebody in a corporation that's going to know, want to ask, right at a party or whatever. How long have you had the same auditor? What does your audit report say? So uh, when I presented the uh, I, I brought the, our audit papers with and uh, and I didn't get to the point there. But uh, there was no basic interest except it's online, so you can just see it online. We don't need a copy or anything. But what I'm saying is that any foundation who's supporting an entity needs to know the uh, actual health of that entity. Now, most people say it's the conservation district is just wonderful and, and everything's good. There might be somebody along the line with preparation or anything that's going to ask that because they're going to be interested in how does this entity audit? And what, how often do they have changed their auditors? So I think it's just something that the foundation should know the answers to a little bit. Cause someday it might happen.
So um, if I'm hearing correctly and not being part of the conversation, I mean, we do our annual audit. So if it's just a matter of them having awareness of here's our practice, this is what we do and this is why we do it. We're sharing that. And likewise, they then are doing their own as a public charity now.
Right.
Um, they do their own audit and they have their own guidelines. And you know, I'm sure this board would be interested as well, so reciprocal.
Right, so there should just be some points that, that the um, that the foundation should have. You know, nothing big, but the question might arise at some point in time. And they need to know.
By the way, well, that's great, well, that's great. That's, that's great. That's why again, the board liaison role, my role as an advisor and then our executive director on that side, that kind of goes back and forth, that we're sharing that. And that maybe during those planned, you know, when we're doing those shared meetings or whatever that we need to do, there's an opportunity there just to kind of.
Twice. There's been a lot of tough hope against us that I believe.
That situation. And I know we have always been uh, not only for that, but very conscientious, even though they are a public charity, but because of the appointment process, because of the councils of the district, we walk and we hold them to a higher standard of things that they don't need to do, but they do it for transparency and very conscientious about.
All right. Executive Director's report.
All right, let's see here, what can I tell you? We talked about the open lands. Um, thank you uh, for those that attended and a great event. A lot of the conservation players and the whole she, the upper movement in this alliance region is there. Um, they have a new strategic plan, so uh, exciting to kind of see their investment and their continued interest in, in helping a lot of partners. They've been a great partner for the, the district. Uh, the Economic Development Corporation has their dinner in November. And so we will be sending out uh, Bonnie and Nora have volunteered to attend that event. So we'll be heading out to that program. Uh, Friends of Happtac is hosting the date and we'll send that out. That's on Veterans Day on the eleventh. And they did confirm, I, I, I saw it today for the first time on the date and just kind of, well, that's a holiday. But staff's going to open up and they're going to hold their meeting on the eleventh. So um, that's a great event, anybody that has availability um, to go over there, they've got to see. And then share that. Um, the Winter Landscapes is out uh, to print. So that will be in the mailboxes and, and online. If it's not already online, maybe it is online.
In the next week.
In the next week, it'll be online. So uh, that and it's just October, October um, that we like to call. Uh, there's been many great events you've read about in the Wiki while between the true planning of Coral Woods, where we had over a hundred people out planting trees, um, acorns out in North Branch. Um, we've had uh, the big sit with the Happtac friends. Um, and then of course all the, the hype of mites and all the other programs that are going on. So I would just direct, there's still a lot of programs, even though weather uh, is going to be changing. Um, there's still lots of activities going on. Uh, we do have a departure. Um, uh, Dr. Movenah from our education team is departing us. And so um, sad to see her go, but uh, thank her for her time and service here at the district. And then we'll introduce to you two new team members that have come over and our operations team and our um, accounting finance team uh, next month. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
And then the only other with the quarterly report. So also this is, we do our total of the updates on all the things that are going on. So you see strategic planning, capital projects, our attendance dashboard, and then foundation reports, and then two special reports with the find your wild, which is um, again, a, a great report of the success and impact that it had. And then the great outdoor bears Charlie see. So read those, uh, no action required, but just making sure things are tracking. Um, we were talking strategic planning, um, not many of the movement, many things are in progress. They will continue to be in progress. There are things that are larger year over year and it's a five-year plan. So I mentioned the law of anybody, just they're in the works. And you can read the narratives on it to see the different activities that they give us. That's all I have.
All right, the software conversion update.
All right, so Caitlin, you want to highlight this one? And this is information of your worksheet, a great job with the team staffing team on, on our registration.
Thanks, um, so we had a um, a joint task force um, from different departments throughout districts who would be impacted by our registration plaque there. Um, so that includes uh, those who use it for our hunting registration, obviously the education department and programming um, and summer camps. And then um, IT Amelia gives a lot of support, so she was in there, in there as well. And then of course, um, our camping, I think I helped the rental. All of those things run through our registration software. Um, so we looked at a total of fifteen different potential software um, uh, company. We narrowed that down to seven and took demos with seven of them and then narrowed that down to two. Um, and finally selected uh, a software um, that we would like to transition to from our provider.
So it doesn't require a board approval as under the purchase threshold. It's just we wanted to make you aware, I think it's going to be a great change. And we were, um, team did a great job when we were in Orlando. You could see on the floor, all the different vendors that are available. They spent a lot of time with us, people were walking by that we knew and were giving like, oh, they're great. You know, they're quality, you know, gold medal type organizations. And so you could just see the energy. So I think this is going to provide great customer service and, and for staffing on this tech. So she's got it mapped out with the timeframe to get it all done and hopefully under our new system.
But you mean Leah will work with Amelia?
Right, right. We're going to have to call the, the A to the E.
The company is called Amelia, the product is called Smart Rec. So we're going to change, we're going to call it Smart Rec, so that poor Amelia does not get confused.
All right, thank you. Speaking of Amelia, any public comments?
I'm not seeing any raised hands online.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, there are motion to go into executive session. Is that how we do that?
I moved to go into executive session. And you have to read the reason why.
Uh, motion going to executive session pursuant to two C five purchase lease of real property and two C twenty-one review of close up amendments of the open meetings at five Illinois one twenty-one at Zach. All right, moved in seconded.
Yeah. Tressi Verrier.
Yes.
Secretary uh, Zeller. Yeah, Tressi Lady.
Yeah.
Tressi Zimmerman.
Yes.
Tressi Brady.
Yes.
And President Everard.
Yes. All right, so meeting is adjourned, we will resume. They'll return and executive session in a few minutes. Brocall.
President Everard.
Here.
Secretary Zeller. Here. Tressi Zimmerman.
President.
Tressi Brady. Here. Tressi Lady.
Yes.
Tressi Sir.
Here. All right, you know, the business is a.
No, we have an accident.
Oh yeah, that's right, we got it. So we need, is there a motion to authorize the execution, execution of a gift agreement for the donation of the Harris Trust and Savings Bank Trust, number HTV one three five nine parcel and the acquisition of real property according to its terms?
So.
And Bonnie.
Second.
Seconded by Nora.
Tressi Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller. Yeah, Tressi Lady.
Yes.
Tressi Brady.
Yes.
Tressi Sir.
Yes.
President Everard.
Yes. All right, ten more acre.
That's nice.
All right, now is there a motion to adjourn?
Y'all want to stay.
I guess.
I'll move.
How about that, Otani? All right, both move to adjourn.
A second.
Seconded by Heather.
Tressi Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Zeller.
Yes.
Tressi Lady.
Yes.
Tressi Derek.
Yes.
Tressi Brady.
Yes.
President Everard.
Yes, they are adjourned, thank you everyone.